You know where number 26 council will be called to order? Would you please stand up for the pledge of allegiance? We did stand in the home of the class.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes in the November the 13th meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes that presented.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes in November the 13th. Would the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Kehar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes? Yes. Next item on the agenda will be con- conduct a public hearing and consider resolution 2018-28 regarding city's intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for WPT 2440 midpoint drive.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the statement of the bill today. Would the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Kehar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, we request your comments from the public. Could you state your name and address? And you have three minutes.
Jeff Potty, 55 South 103rd Street. Here a few months ago, I was told that there wasn't going to be a tax increase because they didn't change the mill levy, but lo and behold, my city tax went up. And I think that's pretty much a lie when you say that, that we're not going to tax increase just because the mill levy doesn't go up. I took the liberty to look at it and I'm like, well, some of you guys are going to be paying this year, so all yours went up. Is that not a tax increase? It is. And I think that additional no tax increase, according to my statement, earned the city an extra $230,000 that the citizens are paying. Because I know a lot of companies out here on Wood End aren't paying that because they're locked in at those lower rates for years. Some of those rates are 50 and 8% discounts. But I'm sure you are trying to change that. You said it, but I don't necessarily believe it. But that's it.
Thank you. There are no more. Next item on the agenda will be conduct a public hearing and consider resolution 2018-28 regarding city's intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for WPT 2440 midpoint drive.
Mayor, we first make a motion to open a public hearing and let you perform a hearing from Scott first and then a little public hearing. The staff report when a little public hearing.
Mayor, make a motion to open a public hearing to consider resolution 2018-28 regarding the city's intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for WPT 2440 midpoint drive.
Second.
It's been moved in second to open a public hearing. Would the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Kehar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes? Yes. Now we will hear from Mr. Anderson. Is that correct?
Scott Anderson, Special Bond Counsel. This will give you the overview of the project and you should have both an agenda memo with the resolution as well as a cost benefit analysis that was prepared for the project. That, first, over to Scott.
Mayor, council members, Scott Anderson, Bond Counsel. The city's previously issued industrial revenue bonds for a 225,000 square foot office and distribution facility for the benefit of Rapidville and Goss. These bonds were issued in 2006 for a project of 2440 midpoint drive. Those bonds have since paid and the property is now back on the tax rolls as of two years ago. WPT is the current owner of that project. WP desires to construct 105,000 square foot expansions of this building. The building is currently utilized by NWI veterinary and this expansion is being constructed for their benefit. The request is for a, in exchange for this expansion, the company is requesting approximately 50% 10-year property tax abatement. The city has proposed a pilot schedule with the company. The pilot schedule would range from 134,000 in the first year to 153,000 in year 10. The property tax abatement will have no impact on the existing building, so the existing building, as I said, is back on the tax rolls and it will continue to pay all the taxes that is, that are levied against it. The Kansas law states that before the city can grant property tax abatement, we need to hold a public hearing and consider a cost benefit report. Michael, was the cost benefit report, do us hand it out?
Yes.
Okay, great. The cost benefit report was prepared by Steve Robb. Mr. Robb has prepared many cost benefit reports for the city in the past. If you look at the last page of that report, Mr. Robb sets forth his assumptions after consultation with the company and others. He assumes that there'll be 10 jobs created in the first year because of this expansion and he also assumes it'll bring a few new residents to the city and also some increase in local retail sales and personal incomes. The estimated annual property, new property tax revenues as a result of this project, and this is from the 50% that's not abated, of that 77,000 will go to the city and 304,000 will go to a combination of all the taxing jurisdictions each year. If you look at the page, I believe, three of the, oh, I'm sorry, page two of the report, this is where he sets forth the benefit cost ratio. It ranges as low as 3.03 for the city to a little over 14 for the state. Anything, you know, generally when you look at these reports in the past and as Mr. Robb will tell you, generally anything above a one and a half or two to one is considered pretty good. So at 3.0, this is a little better than average, what we typically see. And actually, you see, you tend to see a little better percentages on expansion projects because there's, you know, you've already got the existing over there and it's just how the math works on these. But after the city considers the cost benefit report, you should go ahead and take comments from the public for the public hearing and then you can then consider the resolution after the public hearing.
Mayor, the only two things that I might add to that is that the existing building as it sits today is on the tax roll for approximately 9.3 million, so that's what it pays taxes on. The land underneath this building right now isn't taxed because it's been in the form of a detention basin and common area, so that land is, basically, doesn't do anything. One way or the other, if the building on top of it obviously increased that. And part of this project is a result of a relocation or expansion of NWI at Park Facility that will be moving in 31 existing employees in addition to expected 10 new employees that company. So just some other items. I think as Scott noted on the abatement period over that 10 years, it's roughly 50%, so on the pilot side, for us as a city over that 10 years, you know, roughly generates about 367,000 in a 10-year period. I think they estimated 77,000 something, I think, so it's in that range. Do you have any answer to any questions from the public?
Okay, we first, have the council ask questions or we open up to the public?
If you have questions or if you want to hear from the public parks, I would like to do so.
Okay, so first, we'll open up to the public. Any comments from the public?
I have a comment.
Please come forward and stick your name and address.
Jeff Potty, 55 South 103rd Street. I don't have the privilege to have one of these documents in front of me, but I think you said over a 10-year period, the city will bring in $367,000 roughly under the pilot. Under the pilot. So if they were paying their full tax like myself and my neighbors do, that would be doubled, right?
Yes.
And I guess I don't know, what does this company pay in wages, because they said some might relocate here? Is it going to be $12 an hour or 15 or what kind of benefits? I mean, it's obviously figuring the top threshold benefit, which I hear is thrown around a lot. All I know is that, is that we got all these businesses down here, but my taxes keep going up.
I'm not sure what their current average wages are. I'm not aware that they are receiving any support through the state or the state for prior pay of subsidies.
And I think another fact is that when they pay half their taxes, that's half that's not going to the county, the school district, I mean, everybody else, library, everything I pay. And they, and all they do is they make a larger profit. I mean, is the, are the other small businesses getting a tax break or is it just the large corporations that?
Then see if it applies for the IRVs or other tax incentives that are available.
You know, I don't want to give someone a tax break that not 50%. And I mean, tax break like maybe 10 or 15% because I'm not getting tax breaks. I guess that's all.
We do have the applicant representative who's, I think, we should address him. Go ahead. Name and address.
Yeah, name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. Kurt Peterson here on behalf of the applicant with pulse in LA 6201 College Boulevard of Le Park, Kansas. Really starting brief because we can get as deep into the weeds and the theory of this particular project as we want, but starting with the high points. This is an extremely competitive environment that we find ourselves in in Kansas City, really nationwide, but let's focus on our own town. In Kansas City right now, trying to retain and get new top businesses with significant amounts of jobs and expansion potential is very hard, especially in what I'll call the industrial space. And I know there's other people in the room that know this just by way of their day jobs or experience being on the council. When we don't compete as a city for these, to, in this case, retain or attract or to help grow businesses in this environment, we lose. What we gain when we do compete is we get businesses that stay. For example, this business is a very well-respected, what's the word, veterinary, sorry, veterinary pharmaceutical supplier. And a lot of different, we know that a lot of different places were seeking them. They needed a place where they could consolidate. They wanted to take their Shawnee operations and consolidate them with what they had here. They either needed to do it here, of course, there was some available dirt to do that, or they needed to go somewhere else. And we all know there's other places they could go. They wanted to be here, but they can't do it by shooting themselves in the foot economically. Whether or not anybody in the audience, myself or all of you, whether or not we like or don't like the idea of public incentives, they exist and there's nothing we can do, I'll say on a macro, kind of, you know, citywide basis to change that. So as long as they do exist, I respectfully, of course, would suggest that we do go after businesses like this to try to get them, especially when they're already here in the city, to expand, in this case, 105,000 square feet. So respectfully understand various opinions on the topic of public incentives, but here, I think this is a great use to allow this company to, as Michael intimated, to be able to bring 31 new jobs into the city and then, we didn't get into this, but immediately grow in year one, I understand from the tenant, and get six jobs immediately on top of that and then beyond that to continue to grow. So if you have more questions about this, this particular tenant or this project, I'd love to answer them. But in short, while certainly respecting different views on incentives in general, I do hope that you see this as really a great benefit for the city. As we've seen, by the way, 10 years later, what happens if the existing land, it comes on the tax rolls and it'll pay for years and years and years and years, both in the way of jobs and direct pay for taxes. So with that, open any questions.
Thank you.
I do have a question. So did you say Mike Urban, Mr. Peterson, said that this is the build where a detention pond was?
There's an existing detention pond and then there was some common area that was attached with Office Max, which the same owner of--
So it was just on dirt?
It's on dirt.
Not getting any tax money?
Right. It's generating zero in revenues off the dirt where this is going to be located at. They are enlarging, to make this work on a planning size, there's some existing detention basins out there, one in the common area and one actually on WPT site that they're expanding as part of their project cost to capture the water that was being captured in this existing pond. So they're rearranging dirt out there, so to speak, to make this work, but there's not remaining taxable land that's there now that'd be being used. There's a little bit of, obviously, the existing buildings that will connect to that, but that will still be taxed as it is today.
If I may add, you know, I've been working with the city of Edwardsville for 20 years now, so on industrial revenue bond issues. And I can, there's a couple of things I can tell you. Number one is 50% for this type of project in Johnson County is on about the low end of what you see. Generally, you could get a little bit more. I will tell you that we held pretty hard in our discussions with the company. We really did insist that 50% was as far as we were really wanting to go, willing to go. And the other thing too is having done industrial revenue bonds for the Wood End Road projects, I can't tell you, we've taken applications from everybody. Everybody down there has had the opportunity to submit an application. We've done projects for, you know, Dolph Holman when he built this building there, Dan Bubin when he built his tree place. Some, we've done projects for some pretty small businesses and really tried to give them the same opportunities as everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
A comment that I'd like to make is that, in agreement with Kurt, Mr. Peterson, is this is a competitive market and they'll look for the next big thing down the road or what another city is going to offer. And they'll uproot and move and take advantage of whatever incentives are offered by another city. So to retain a business and add jobs, I think we need to make sure that we're doing all that we can, if it financially makes sense. I know 50% sounds, it's a lot, sounds like a lot, it is a lot. But if we want to continue to see our industrial park expand, I think that's the direction that we're going to have to go. Something that I'd like to see is a way that the 31 jobs, and we can talk about this in our time, but I'd like to think of a way to incentivize employers to have their employees relocate to the city of Edwardsville, whatever that may be. I don't know what, I mean, we can all, you know, think about that and talk about it, but how do we get them to come here and pay taxes into, and shop in Edwardsville and buy their gas and, you know, spend their dollars here in Edwardsville? So that's just a couple of comments I would like to bring up.
Well, the other thing in regards to that too, if you look at that 1 through 10 tax pilot amounts?
Yes.
That's amount that we get zero pre, out of the present time. That's all incremental growth on land that's already ended the industrial park. Like I said, having somebody stick around for a while is a great idea. And I know a lot of companies are actually playing hardball with actually staying and renegotiating their pilot programs that expires. And so it's one of those deals where, you know, the opportunity to bring some more tax revenue into town to help with everything, and I think that'll take advantage of it.
I would say that NWI as a company actually has expanded within that building. When they originally moved into that building, they probably occupied less than half, maybe 40%. They then grew internally in the building and then they ultimately ended up taking all of the existing 225,000 square feet. So when they're done here, they have, you know, 330,000 square feet for their product, you know, for them alone, which would make them probably one of our largest, you know, businesses in the single book like that in the city.
This company advertises for employment on the billboard out there by the gas station or--
They did, they did guess.
So they are providing revenue back into the city for whoever owns that billboard?
Well, that's true.
And if I remember right, about a year or so ago, my wife, when she was looking for job required, I think I paid $12 to $14 for office help?
I would think--
Which is not a bad amount for an office worker.
I'm not sure we have many employers that, in that industrial park that are under $12.50 midpoint. I'm not going to say all of that. I mean, they have some seasonal people, but the permanent employee has tended to rise over the years that I've been here.
Mike, did you say that appraised value is about 9.3 million?
For the existing, so there's, there's two buildings there. Both of those originally were on, on a form of tax abatement. The one that's made up by NWI today is valued, I looked at this before I came here, I didn't print it off, was about 9.3 and the other buildings a little over $11 million. So combined, those two buildings are valued at about $20 million on the tax roll today.
And the abaintments were also, they're paying?
Those, both went off at about the same time. Though, this building is known as the Goss Building and it was originally, I think, the first building in that series, but those two were done pretty much together, the Goss Building and the Office Max.
Do we have any idea how much?
Which, it's been through a couple of consolidations.
Do we know how much the new appraised value approximately will be after the expansion?
Generally, those buildings, so 105,000 is probably going to be about four and a half million. That's partially how we calculate our--
Yeah, we're guessing mid-fives.
Yeah.
Mid-fives, I'm sorry. Yes.
So we'd be collecting 50% on that? When it comes in then in 10 years, it's just all, all profit based?
So what you, what you see from a, you know, and we do budgets and things and why it's, you know, if you remember, we talked about the mix. So today, our industrial customers, commercial industrial, pay about 60% of all the property taxes of the city that are on the tax roll and our residential is in around the 30%, 30 to 35%. But the pilots are shown as really separate revenue and right now, today, that's over about $330,000 is estimated for the next year. And so these pilot revenues still come in. So it's, so if I just went and went to the tax roll, this new expansion would not show up on the tax roll. It's still valued, so they still will calculate a value on it each year for appraisal, but it's not, but then over here on the, on this separate side is where the pilot comes in. So you can think about currently today, we have about $55 million in assessed values and that, so for every penny or one mil, it generates about $55,000. So if you think about this, if it's generating $70,000 a year of pilots, that's roughly about one and a quarter that would be charged on the tax roll and we didn't have that then. So it's just another way of looking at it. But if you're trying to get mils to dollars, and it's not always easy to do, but, you know, a mil is about $55,000. So in order to raise $55,000 in revenue, we would have to raise or, you know, the mil levy has to be one mil for every $55,000 in property tax charge. So we do have, you know, one that's paying, you know, to us, and actually our portion in the 77,000 plus range, that's going to be, you know, mil of 1.25, 1.3 square foot max that we have, so just as an equivalent.
So an expansion that's not costing the city anything is just going to put more revenue into the budget, which lowers the taxes for the residents?
Yeah, I mean, that's been our, I mean, if you look at our quote, well, I both have about, actually, our commercial industrial base has less value, but generates more income on a tax income. So if you did have the industrial base and you were still providing the same surface levels, you obviously have a higher mill levy assessed on the property residential side. The math, though. Obviously, there's a lot of policy decisions in that, but that's just the math.
If there are no further questions, we would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Think most would close the public hearing?
Second.
And then move in second to close the public hearing. Would the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Kehar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt resolution number 2018-28, resolution determining the intent of the city of Edwardsville, Kansas to issue its industrial revenue bonds in the aggregate, approximately a principal amount of $7 million to finance the cost of acquiring, constructing and equipping a commercial facility for the benefit of WPT 2440 midpoint drive LLC and its successors and its sons.
Second.
I will not repeat. That is the motion, motion in second to adopt resolution 2018-28 regarding city's intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for WPT 2440 midpoint drive. Would the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Kehar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is consider resolution 2018-29 regarding GAAP waiver for 2018 audit.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next two items are more kind of regular items that come before you this time every year, more housekeeping than anything else. The first is to consider resolution 2018-29, weight in the requirements of generally accepted accounting principles for GAAP in the preparation of the city's annual audit. The state requires that municipalities use the GAAP principles during their yearly audits unless the city council opts out by way of a resolution. This is pretty standard. A lot of different municipalities do it. It allows us to report on a cash basis law rather than accrual. This doesn't mean that we're opting out of generally accepted accounting principles, but rather the reporting mechanism that we use with the, that we've used over the last number of years allows us to report in that way versus the GAAP process. So if there are any other questions on that?
I make a motion to adopt 2018, resolution 2018-29 regarding GAAP waiver for the 2018 audit.
Then move in second to adopt resolution 2018-29 regarding GAAP waiver for the 2018 audit. Would the clerk please call roll?
Do you know how many years we've been doing this?
As long as I've been here and I assume quite a few-- Probably as long as we did do an audit. The only reason we would do GAAP, and again, it's the recording mechanism. If you issued, I think, more than $10 million in bonds in a given year, then you would come under GAAP. There are a few other, generally related to bonds and bonding principles. The bottom line is even if you didn't waive it and you did a GAAP audit, you still have to do a cash basis audit. So effectively, you have to do two audits in order to meet that requirement. So no matter what, you have to report a cash basis to the state of Kansas.
Which takes us money of doing one instead of--
It would probably add about $2,000 to the audit to have a GAAP audit done in addition to the cash basis.
Thank you.
Okay, no further questions. Would the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Kehar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stikes?
Thank you. Next item, consider selecting Wendling, Noel, Nelson and Johnson LLC to serve as the city's auditor for the year ending December the 20th, 31st, 2018.
We've had and been working with Wendling, Noel, Nelson and Johnson since 2013 when the city last went out for audit service proposal. The proposal allowed, at that time, the proposal allowed for automatic renewal if it was acceptable on both parties and we continue that relationship up to this point. Engagement letter that the firm sends us every year is included in your packet. It outlines that the start date for the audit would be around April 2019 and you would start seeing those audited figures for discount for year 2018, no later than the end of May. And what that does is it gives us firm numbers that we can start the budgeting process in earnest and that we'll be knowing what the audit tells us from the previous year. The only note that I'll give is we may be considering going out to bid next year for audit services, not because of any, you know, we're very happy with the relationship we have with our current firm. Every couple of years, could get hired on that and see what else is out there. So that may be a change that you guys see down this time next year, but as far as this year is concerned, we recommend moving forward with our current auditor.
Does that be competitive with--
That, yeah, currently the audit fee is 12,400 plus $150 in state filing fee. Last year was 12,100.
What do you mean with other companies?
Uh, yeah, I would just say so.
And when we've done audits in the past, we've been, they've been very competitive, you know, on the fee. And we don't necessarily select based on fee or services like audit, but the fee has always been very competitive.
Well, there's since we did turn it up to bid, that's why, I mean, I think the synergies aren't probably good every once in a while, but-- you, you probably did every once in a while to just try to make sure you're getting a good rate, but you don't want to totally do the very cheapest one either.
Well, we try to do this on about a five-year cycle. I will say part of the reasons that we don't want to do it right now is we do know that our finance manager, this will be her last audit, and it's probably not a great time to be changing auditors, same finance managers, all in a short cycle. So that was part of our reasoning. But again, we've been very pleased with their audits. Again, they actually work for you, not for us. So from a staff standpoint, they've been very good to work with. I think the information they provided to the council over the years has been valuable and useful, but ultimately, it is your audit. They work, the auditor works for the city council and for the staff.
And did you consider selecting Wendling, Noel, Nelson, and Johnson LLC to service the city's auditor for the year ending December 31st, 2018?
It has been moved in second to select Wendling, Noel, Nelson, and Johnson LLC to serve as the city's auditor for the year ending December the 31st, 2018. Would the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Payhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're good to feel free.
Next item, long as you have no rules of sale of Seagrave Pumper for $45,000 from the house, can we get rid of it?
As you know, we have Mr. Burrow, who's the deputy chief of the, his fire chief, Tim Widdam, is out on leave, on sick leave, following surgery, I didn't get the advice of him in the past, so I'm sure Mr. Burrow can handle this, but if not, I'll help him along.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in reference to the pumper, when we purchased the new ladder truck, we put out a couple of messages through the international, or the Kansas Fire Chiefs Association, the Kansas Firefighters Association, on our webpage, our Facebook page, and talked to a couple vendors, tried to get bids in for our old pumper, 620, which is the Seagrave. The only one that we received was from Brindley Mountain for $45,000. They are a company that buys used apparatus, repurposed, assembled a little bit, and then sells them to departments that don't have a big pocketbook to get new trucks. So it's the recommendation of the staff that we accept the bid, $45,000. The price of $45,000 for the 620 from Brindley Mountain.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt, or that we accept the bid from Brindley Mountain Fire Apparates for the amount of $45,000 before it breaks down again.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the sale of the Seagrave Pumper for $45,000 to Brindley Mountain Fire Apparates LLC.
Do they come and get that? How does that get delivered? Just out of curiosity?
They will come and pick up.
They'll come get them, do you go buy?
Yes.
We take everything off of it and it's on down route. They get a little set of driver up here, probably Wendling's or someone on this little drive up. Where's that, where's that at? Mountain or whatever. Let's go.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is, I will just, this is in line with what, when we came to you, related to the acquisition of the aerial ladder truck, we anticipated in this $40 to $45,000 price range for, so to speak, trade-in or sell. You know, we had certainly done some research on that, but they did go out through a formal bid process, had it open for the 30 days, and it's the only formal offer that we received in that bid package. Where will that $45,000 land to the general? Back to the general funders, sale of assets.
You have nothing but?
Right, yeah, I haven't asked one yet, but the, did we offer it to, as a trade-in to the company and what did they offer?
They were not interested in the trade-in. Actually, they basically recommended, which a lot of the people say would prefer to sell it out to Brindley Mountain.
Okay. And then secondly, I'm quite a follower of Purple Wave.
Yes.
And I know that a lot of government sells things on Purple Wave. Why didn't we go that route with this piece? What?
Yeah, sometimes we'll do that, so there's two, there's two things to that.
I know, that's why I'm wrong. I'm just curious why this, because I see parts on their, I see it on the site.
We probably got the better value out of it. One thing with Purple Wave, typically, they're not reserved and so whatever the little bid or high bid is, and then the person buying has to pay, be on top of that, the 10% is what it sells for. And so we just, we use both of those processes sometimes. I think we felt like this particular item was best served by going after the going of the process. I don't believe we would have received a higher value bid with Purple Wave on this. We will take all the loose equipment off. I mean, there are some things that have to go with it. There's a certain number of ladders, you know, things that are connected to the truck, but loose equipment that's in there that we can reuse will go with it. I don't remember our hoses, if the hoses stay, will go on the truck.
No, they won't come off.
They come off, yeah. So those types of things would take off. You know, there's some items that are attached and part of it that go with it. Well, you have to do a pump test 30 days out. That is one requirement, which is not unusual, so within 30 days of it going to them, because that's a pump test, we can pump test anyone on you anyways, so we don't have any reason for you to pass a pump test.
Is this the one that froze a couple of years ago?
No, that was a different one. That one we sold about a month ago. It had a pump, but pump froze. Yeah.
So just, how come they don't do the pump test at the time of purchase? Why are we giving them 30 days to?
No, they do, we have to do a pump test 30 days prior.
Prior to them taking possession?
Taking possession, yes. Yeah, that's a requirement on us. I don't remember what.
I thought you were saying 30 days after they took possession.
$100, $100.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the sale of Seagrave Pumper for?
We already.
Oh, we did all that?
Yeah, we did that in the session. Let's go. Yeah, the clerk, please call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Payhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Schreiber? Yes.
Next item is to consider canceling the December 24th, 2018 council meeting.
I'd like to start the third month's discussion on that, unless it will be your Christmas Eve. I'll make a motion to cancel the December 24th, 2018 council meeting during the holiday.
It has been moved in second to cancel December the 24th, 2018 city council meeting. Would the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Payhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, a matter of course, Mike?
Well, I don't really have anything formal, but I do want to say a great big thank you to our public works department. Part of the reason Tammy's not here, she was here from 8:00 AM, or 8:00 PM last night to 8:00 AM today, along with one of our other public works employees. The other two worked the day hours, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, along with a member of the fire department also, worked on one of our pilot trucks, which is kind of our backup system. They did a wonderful job. I took opportunity to come out here last night and drive around, around 8 o'clock just to, I was over in Alata and I couldn't even get over, I was over around College Street and I don't even think they filed their side of the bridge because even with the four-wheel drive, it was like, holy cow. But they have done, I think, a tremendous job and I would put them up against anybody when you look at our streets, comparisons to their streets and some of our other joining cities. I think they do a wonderful job, so I just want to shout out to them, really is not the only thing I have to say.
Real quick on that, we put it out on Facebook, just say, hey, thanks to Public Works for pulling it all night, or we got 20 comments, none of them negative, just saying how much better it is than when people come in and out of Edwardsville, how big they have the city.
You already put that whole up, Mel? I didn't hear any problems at all. You know, we have one new spreader that we bought this year and then the other spreader we bought when we bought the last truck, so both of those are fairly new. We have the third spreader, we keep on the light truck. We've had problems with it in the past, but I think all three were functional. I didn't do it otherwise.
Well, we just remind them that Edwardsville goes from Riverview to I-70 on 98th Street?
Yes, sir.
And that's my only, only thing, I thought everything looked great.
Did, and I only ask this because we had had discussions with Kansas City, Kansas in the past.
They ended up doing it.
Well, and they said they were going, in fact, and part of the reason is, they said for them, they wanted to just go ahead and come all the way down because they had to turn around to Riverview and otherwise, and that they would clear that section of road. So it's kind of a handshake agreement.
Well, you just got to wait on them to, whenever that happens, is the only thing.
Right. Maybe one of us just to push it and go.
Go somewhere.
Right. Okay, I will raise that. It was a timing issue, we did know that, it's just that we had had that discussion in the past about that being kind of this adjoining road and they're like, hey, we got to come down and turn around, so we'll just do it. That's the reason.
It's just, it's just not, I don't think, high on their list.
Probably is.
Other road to get done.
Right. It would be on, we consider it an entrepreneurial streak.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Mayor, that's all I have.
No further comments from the city managers, okay? Do you have anything to add? Chief Muffet?
Great job, Public Works. We had very few traffic related incidents. I mean, everybody must have stayed home because we didn't have really much activity at all, so that was a good thing. Congratulations to Captain Jeff Short, graduating the Certified Public Managers Program, a year-long program. It's twofold. There's a law enforcement piece that there didn't used to be, and then there's a Certified Public Managers full program that they go through. So he's been going to us, to the KLEC, Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center for a year now, and now he's done, he's graduated. He gets two graduations, so congratulations to him. Not only does he graduate, but his capstone received a four out of four maximum. He got a lot of compliments. Capstone project, great riding skills, did a really terrific job, so we're proud of him. Congratulations.
Are you going to add something to that?
No.
Okay.
That is, you represent the city well. Thank you very much. Public Works, it is pretty cool to drive into Edwardsville, have to run across all the other roads around here. It had it nice and dry and clear.
The, that's right, the mayor's person, did you guys have any volunteer opportunities for that?
We've actually got, there's the, Mike, we work with the Cemetery Board and the church that he's associated with, has kind of stepped up and taken up the volunteer slot. So if you guys make it, if you create, you can come and go ahead.
Okay. And I saw one comment on the Facebook post, which I think the Facebook's been really good lately, like it seems like we've gotten a lot of activity, but they suggested maybe making it an event. If you got it in an event, yeah, we can do reminders and stuff like that, so it'll remind people the day of the event, which I think is really helpful and.
We've done that in the past. You know, I don't really know if we're going to do this in the next, we're probably still in that circle. Yeah, we did something, we're still picking out, closing out.
Appreciate the efforts on disposing of our truck and looking forward to the new one coming in. Congratulations, Jeff, on your endeavors. Stay with us, don't go away.
Okay. Margaret?
Just as a reminder, what time does the ceremony start tomorrow night?
Six o'clock and then the, I think, the activity over three hundred to six thirty right after.
Right after. And Tammy, where is she? Of all nights, to be a graduate.
She probably asleep. She, she had some, she had already had scheduled some other personal time off and then she was.
I saw her. I saw her, it was Sunday evening.
Yeah, so.
But I told Mayor before the meeting, I went out to warn her today, visit my mom. I'm not saying their streets are bad, but they're not near as good as ours.
Noted.
Congratulations too.
Those were good.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
On the, as far as the taxes going up, I am very much adhered for that. I am, I would like to figure out ways that we can reach. It should be nice sometime for us to be able to have our people say, you know, our taxes went down something, whatever that is, you know. I mean, I know that it has to work out and I, and I know that when we sit here and you look at it from the outside and you're thinking, man, you're given and given and given and given to everybody else that comes in. Well, I mean, there's a method to that madness and I, and I hope that people can understand that. I want to, I do want to be responsible for our taxpayer dollars and make sure that we're spending them in the most beneficial ways that we can. That being said, I'd sure like to be able to reduce that amount of tax sometime in the future, so that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing really major to add to other than please come out tomorrow night, it's going to be cold, if I'm going to be cold, I think you're.
Hopefully we'll have hot chocolate available.
Jeff, I'd like to congratulate you. Thank you. With that? You're all right.